Peoria City Council Meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Leonie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Karlat.
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Binsbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Leonie.
Here.
Council Liaison Lane.
Here.
Council Liaison Halt.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council Meeting of St. Patrick's Day, March 17, 2015. This is the final call to submit speaker request forms. If anyone would like to address an issue that is on the agenda or if you would like to speak to an issue that is not on the agenda, we have speaker request forms in the back of the room or from the city clerk. If you give us a little bit of information, you will be recognized at the appropriate time. The first item on the agenda is swearing in by Presiding Municipal Judge George Anacnost and seating of new council member, Bridgette Binsbacher. Is Binsbacher, if you want to go down front with the judge? There he is.
Mr. Swenson, Mr. Kemp, good evening. I'm happy with your leave to administer the oath. Would you take a second and introduce your family?
Yes, this is my husband, John Binsbacher, my daughter Katie, my son Clay, and we have two other sons that could be here this evening, Kyle and Ryan Benoit.
That sounds very nice. You must be very proud and very happy for your wife. That sounds beautiful. So I'm going to administer the oath. If you could raise your right hand and please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of Arizona.
Of Arizona.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of council member.
Of council member.
For the city of Peoria, Arizona.
For the city of Peoria, Arizona.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, members of the public, some applause for your new council.
Well, I am overcome with nerves and emotion, I must say, but I want to extend thanks to my amazing family and my husband who has literally carried our family, continues to carry our family, literally on his shoulders. And it took commitment from all six of us to begin this journey and see it through to completion. It really did. It took every one of us, and I've never been more proud to be a Binsbacher than I am right now. Thank you, and to Kyle and Ryan too, because it really truly took our whole family unit. I also want to extend a sincere thanks from the bottom of my heart to the constituents, to the residents of the Mesquite District. Many of you are here this evening from all different communities in the district and others are here from different areas of Peoria that I have had ongoing relationships, some for many years, some new, but it was your effort that started, you know, with old friends coming forward and some new introductions that evolved into this unbelievable effort that literally carried me across the finish line. And I will never ever forget this feeling. So thank you to the residents of Peoria and the Mesquite District. I also want to thank Dr. Ken Krieger, who was part of this campaign in the very beginning and went through a lot himself and joined forces with me, and I'm very, very grateful to you for stepping up and supporting me publicly the way you did. I want to thank Mayor Karlat for supporting me unconditionally and trusting that I was the right person for this job. And the rest of council, I have the utmost respect for all of you and what you do to serve Peoria. I want to sincerely also thank the staff. Some of you I have worked with, some of you I have known for many years, and some of you I'm going to get to know and work with, and I am so looking forward to that. I never doubted for one second, regardless of the outcome of this election, that our relationships would be intact and we could continue to do great things in the city of Peoria. So I really look forward to working with you and growing Peoria and being part of this amazing leadership team. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
We will now take a 15-minute recess. Members of the city council, we're ready to reconvene. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. These are items listed on the agenda with a C. They are considered routine by the city council or have been previously addressed by the council. They will be passed by one motion unless a member of the council requests that an item be removed. Are there any items to be removed from consent? Seeing none? Seeing none? Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice Mayor and a second from Councilmember Patena. Please vote and Clerk will record your vote. It is unanimous. Now we will move on to the regular agenda. This is a public hearing, item 14R, off-track wagering license renewal, American Greyhound Racing, Gallaghers of Peoria, 6750 West Peoria Avenue.
Brent Mattingly, our Chief Financial Officer, will make a brief staff report.
Thank you. It is brief. All fees were paid and all departments recommend approval.
Council, are there any questions for Mr. Mattingly? I declare this public hearing open. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to address this issue, please come forward at this time. Seeing no comments, I declare this public hearing closed. Is there a motion on item 14R? Council?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Patena, seconded by Vice Mayor Edwards. It is unanimous. The next item is 15R, Contract and Expenditure Authority, Jokaki Construction, Peoria Sports Complex Improvements, Phase Three, 83rd Avenue and Stadium Way.
Andy Granger, our city engineer, will make presentation on this item.
Thank you, Carl. Mayor, members of the council, item 15R is a council request for authorization to enter into a contract with Jokaki Construction for the third phase of the sports complex improvements. It's also a request to enter into a future contract later this year for the Kids Interactive Kids Zone and other city incurred expenses for $1.1 million for the city manager to Just to give a background on this project, the sports complex improvements project, Phase One was completed right before the spring training of 2014 for a total capital budget of $32 million. This project was part of a sports complex improvements agreement with the Padres and the Mariners to extend their lease agreement by 20 years. Some of the improvements on the clubhouses included, both clubhouses were increased to approximately 60,000 square feet in size from their previous upper 30,000 square foot per clubhouse square area. They now have state-of-the-art hydrotherapy rooms within their clubhouses, larger fitness areas, new kitchen and dining areas, as well as new meeting spaces. And some of these pictures show some of the renderings or some of the actual pictures of the improvements in the clubhouse. The Phase Two improvements were recently completed just before this spring training that we're underway now. This is also part of the sports complex improvement agreement between the Padres and the Mariners. The total capital budget for this project was $9.6 million. It was completed on time and within budget. It included a new team store of approximately 2,400 square feet, a new field level seating and new seats throughout the stadium, a left-field tiered social seating area, a party deck above the team store with a new concession area, burn area improvements, new box office renovations, and facade improvements. Some of the pictures of those improvements that happened over the past year. The Phase Three improvements were created to complete two key items that were important to the teams and the city but were not able to be funded as part of the Phase Two improvements. The improvements became viable once we achieved savings on three other capital improvement projects, which was the 91st Avenue Street Project from Butler to Mountain View, the Lake Pleasant Parkway Project, and the Truck Road Reliever Project. So with that, when we recognized those savings last year, we went to two study sessions in front of council and also a formal council meeting on November 25 to ask for budget authority for the Phase Three sports complex improvements, and that was approved on November 25. Specifically, the scope includes the third base expansion of the seating bowl and replacing the bleachers along the third base, as well as the Kids Interactive Kids Zone. This slide shows some of the renderings of what the improvements will look like when completed. It will give an enhanced fan and large group experience along the third base line, as well as an event space underneath that third base expansion bowl for approximately 3,500 square feet in space of event space that will accommodate up to 200 people in a group event. There will also be an interactive kids zone that's planned behind that third base expansion that will provide an enhanced family experience. The scoping is still being determined between the Community Services Department and the Engineering Department, but the renderings shown are a concept of what that could look like for that interactive kids zone. Our schedule is, if awarded, if that contract is awarded tonight, we will start construction of the third base expansion after spring training in April of 2015. We'll also begin the scoping and the design of the Kids Interactive Kids Zone behind that third base expansion that is anticipated to be completed by the end of the summer so that we can start the construction of the kids zone at the end of the summer and be completed before spring training of 2016. So as you see on the bottom, the construction will be complete on the third base expansion if approved tonight by the end of September of 2015, and the Interactive Kids Zone is estimated to be completed by February of 2016. So again, to summarize, we are asking for authorization to award a job order contract to Jokaki Construction, which is one of our job order contractors, for the expansion of the third base seating bowl and remove the bleachers along the third base area in a contract not to exceed $2.5 million, and then also authorize the expenditure of an additional $1.1 million in a contract for the future Interactive Kids Zone, as well as city incurred expenses up to $1.1 million for the city manager to execute. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Mr. Granger? So do I have a motion on item 15R?
No motion.
A motion by Vice Mayor Edwards.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Finn. It is unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 16R, the Mid Decennial Special Census.
And our Deputy City Manager Susan Deludon will make the presentation on this item, but just a little bit of introduction before I turn it over to Susan. As the council is well aware, every time that the city undertakes a census, after that, there is a redistricting process that the city undertakes. What's before you tonight is simply the decision on the census. Once the census is completed, a redistricting process would be initiated, and at that time there would be ample opportunity for the council to interact with the staff, set out the process for redistricting, the timetable for redistricting, and that then comes at a later point in the process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Susan.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Swenson, and good evening, mayor and city council members. Happy to be here tonight to talk about the 2015 Mid Decennial Special Census, which I'm going to call the Mid Decade Census from here on in in the presentation, just for clarity. clarity. The United States Census Bureau is offering a new product, so to speak. In past 200 years, we've done the census every 10 years, and then at mid-decade, there's been various instruments that they've used to try to update the information but not do an official count, for example, the America Community Survey. Well, now, for the first time ever, they have offered to cities across the United States an opportunity to count their population at the midpoint. I think it's really a function of our world is moving faster, people are moving faster, information flows much more freely, and people have a demand for more up-to-date information than they did decades and decades ago. Because of this, cities that are fast-growing and who may feel that they were underrepresented in the 2010 census are considering seriously recounting and trying to get a better count for our official census numbers. So since last July, actually, we were posed this question. An interdepartmental team here at the city of Peoria has been looking at this question. We've been examining the pros and cons. We've been working at an intergovernmental agency level to talk with other cities in the region and make sure if we gain and others lose, how this will work and how other cities feel about this. We also have been looking at our financial impact, which we'll go over during the presentation, our human resource impact, because this will have a great impact on our Human Resources Department, as well as some facility impact, because if we do the census as a city rather than part of the whole national effort, even though other cities are doing it, we have to supply much of the labor, the facility, and the communications ourselves. So I'd like to thank Lisa Estrada in the Intergovernmental Affairs, Juliares in Human Resources, Katie Gregory and Barry Haug in the Budget Office, Chris Hockes and Sean Cruzweiser, because they've really worked hard to analyze this problem. So what I'm going to give you tonight is the summary, and if you want to drill down on any of the aspects of that analysis, they're here to be able to answer your questions. And what we'll do is we'll go over the background, why it's important to count the population, the mid-decennial process, and the staff recommendation. I think the most important thing to think about as we look at our population of all the factors that we looked at, there's a lot of reason why we want up-to-date information, and we all know that. But I think a little discussion about state shared revenues, which we haven't done for a while, probably would be insightful, because I think the biggest impact of this whole effort will be an increase in our share of the state shared revenues. In 1972, Arizona voters established a single-point collection service known as the Urban Revenue Sharing, and you all look at that during your budget process. As a point in fact, in 1972, does anybody know the population of Peoria? 4,700 people. So our share of the revenue probably was not a great deal at that point in time. I looked that up because I was thinking how quickly things change and how important this is to us. And having good population numbers can provide a predictability and help us get whats do us and help us with our budgeting. The state shared revenues are our income tax, the sales tax, state sales tax, and our gas tax. So when you're going over the budget, and you'll see those sources of revenue noted by your budget folks, and it's very important to the city, it's distributed to cities and towns based on population relative to your standing in the whole, so the whole state of Arizona. So as some go up and others go down, it makes a difference in how that formula is allocated. Even the highway user funds, which we call the gas tax, is very important to this, and 27.5% of that is calculated on population base, so has a big impact on the city. If we look at our city's general fund, it's 31% of the amount is state shared. That's sizable. That's money that could be used for any general governmental need, police, fire, parks, planning, building services, anything that, engineering, some of the things that Andy has just presented to you, impacts all of those types of things. And because we believe that growth has occurred in Peoria since 2010, plus the simultaneous reduction of vacant homes, I was very involved in the 2010 census and the 2009 process that led up to that. We had a good deal of foreclosures. We had a lot of people who vacated homes for other states, people who were doubling up as families maybe moved to other cities, foreclosures. Our city was one of the cities that was really hard-hit in the region, so a lot of the homes could not be enumerated because there was virtually no one there. Those vacancies have now filled in with new residents. In addition to that, our development permit standing in the region has been strong. In fact, it's been one of the two strongest cities for the last couple years in terms of relative proportion. So we believe that relative to other communities that we've grown at a greater rate, simply just looking at the development patterns. Who else is getting involved and who has committed to doing the special census? The town of Gilbert, town of Queen Creek, city of Goodyear, and the city of Buckeye have all taken the actions that staff is presenting before you tonight to take of allocating the resources, the money, and entered into a memorandum of understanding with the federal government, Bureau of Commerce, Census Bureau. So these cities have already declared that they're going to recount their census. The cities of Chandler and Surprise have also done the analysis, like your staff, and considered conducting a special census, but they have not yet taken an action, because Surprise and Chandler both have had pretty strong growth, too. The time for entering into an agreement, though, is getting very short, so we'll see in the next few weeks likely. So these four cities on your slide are definitely committed, have submitted their paperwork, their MOAs, their money, everything is airtight for them. So if we choose not to do anything tonight based on these cities participating, we will lose a proportionate share, as I was explaining earlier. And the Finance and Budget Department have estimated that at $290,000 a year, based on these cities that are going to participate. That's nearly $1.5 million over that time period, the five-year time period prior to the 2020 census being taken. So as I said earlier, we believe we're growing fast. The 2010 census put our population at 154,000. This was actually lower than the projected, and any of us who was around at that time remember they were projecting we'd be about 160 at that time, 160,000. But the economy and the Great Recession really heavily impacted that, and we actually went down in terms of total numbers. Now, our State Demographer Department and MAG, they do mid-decade projections all along, and this might be a number some of you are using in your talks. The 163,0682 is the estimated number at MAG, right? No. But that number cannot be used for state shared revenues, because the number that the State Department of Revenue is going to use is the census number. They don't use estimates. That's the difference. So conducting the Mid Decennial or Mid Decade Special Census would give, based on the generation of about 10,000 people, 9,000 to 10,000 people, $1.5 million per year for the first five years, which would begin in 2017. As Carl mentioned, there'll be other impacts that come along. We won't have these numbers really until 2016, early 2016, and the Department of Revenue accepts the numbers and puts them in for the 17 fiscal year. So that's why there's a lag, as there is a lag in the mid-decade also. So I kind of wanted to put it together in a little chart here, look at the pros and the cons from a kind of a simple point of view, because we're at an interesting crossroads here. Sort of, if we do it, we'll have the increase of 1.5 million each year for five years, and we will then have updated population numbers for five years that are much more current and actually will tell us much more about our population, where they live, who they are, how many people per household, what kind of housing, those kinds of things. Those are the kind of data. Also, we'd have that for grants, for performance metrics, and other things. Now, on the other side, if we do not proceed with a special census, we won't have the cost of doing that, right? But we will lose that 290,000 per year for five years. Also, we lose the opportunity for public education, outreach, and recruitment, so we lessen ourselves the cost of doing that, which I'm going to get to costs here in the next slide. But if you look at this slide, the total amount over the five years of the $7.5 million gain, with the 1.45 million dollar loss, is about a $9 million total financial revenue to the city. But there is a one-time cost to this. The one-time cost is $2.9 million. It's a sizable effort and it's a sizable cost. A little over $1 million would be paid to the U.S. Census Bureau, and they use that for all sorts of things, compiling the data, crunching the maps, having the regional leaders, having the office in Denver, having the training sessions and the enumerations. We retain $1.8 million, and we put it in an account here to be held to pay the local people, because we actually pay the enumerators, and our HR department actually recruits, and they have to get a sizable number of recruits for every person who actually lasts as an numerator. So in addition to the cost of the census itself, which would be agreed to on the MOA if you approved it tonight, would be the indirect cost of public education and outreach, which we estimate at this point in time to be about 30,000. We need to be very aggressive and really get to every house and really talk to the people and make sure they know how important this is to our city budget and to their services. So the total cost would be 2.953 and some change. Okay. So given all those numbers and where we're at and where we see the value, we feel this is a strong enough estimated gain in state shared revenues from completing the special census, and we are under a pretty quick deadline here. We just got the information about two to three weeks ago on the cost. We put this together for council tonight. I've got it signed mail, and we've got to get it off to them this week to meet March 26 deadline by the U.S. Census Bureau. So it's kind of, we need to decide tonight, if at all possible. I'm sure if you're not yet decided, we could ask for a short extension, but also, we're recommending the memorandum of agreement with the U.S. Census Bureau outlined in your staff report, which has the terms and conditions for completing the Mid Decade Census would be agreed to and signed, and a budget amendment and the use of reserves and the amount of 2.9-plus million from the general fund contingency allocated to the appropriate accounts in order to conduct this work. With that, that finishes my formal presentation. We have lots of staff people here and myself to answer any additional questions you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Finn?
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, by the way. A couple of quick questions. I think for me, the biggest key to this whole thing is a projection, what we think we are increasing from the 159,000, I think it was, to 165,000, if I remember those correctly. It's not that up in front of me. So can you just kind of go over for me just once again where we get that information that we have that large of an increase?
In terms of the number of population?
Yes.
We get that information from the State Demographer's Office, and the State Demographer works in conjunction and coordination with MAG, and these numbers are used all over the place for all sorts of things. In addition to that, our planning staff took those numbers, we ran them against vacancies, single-family home permits, multiple-family home permits, occupancy levels, and we checked all of the data and verified it all. That's what took a few months.
So the confidence, I guess what I'm looking for then is the confidence level that our numbers are accurate here and the payback is going, because the payback's going to be there if our numbers are right on the census, right? It's just a mathematical formula. So your confidence level that we are at the levels that you're projecting us to be at is very high?
Yes.
Okay. My second question is, you mentioned that it came from the reserves. I just want to clarify, we pull from the reserves, and then as the additional revenues come in, our first priority would be to be going back in and backfilling those reserves so that we don't deplete our reserve levels. Is that correct?
That's correct. You'll see that amount plugged back in in the budget that's going to be presented to you in April.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Okay, I have one item that I'd like you to reiterate, if you wouldn't mind. You've got the four cities who are already, who have already committed to do their Mid Decade Census, and there are others who looks, who look likely, correct? And based on those four cities, there is an estimation of $290,000 per year in loss for us if we do not do this. Is that correct?
Yes.
And can you explain how that can happen?
They add population, so their relative standing in the state pot of shared revenues goes up and ours drops.
Okay. All right. So it's just simply that, there's one big pie, it's 100%, and somebody is going to get some based on population and others are going to have to get less based on your population.
Right. So if they go forward, then that's what's going to happen.
Okay.
And they are going forward.
And they are going forward. All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion on item 16R?
So moved.
Okay, so that is moved by Councilmember Finn and seconded by Councilmember Leoni. Please vote, and the clerk will record your vote. It is unanimous. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the call to public for non-agenda items. If you wish to address the city council, please complete a speaker request form and return it to the clerk. I have none of those forms at this time, so we're going to move on to reports from city manager. Mr. Swenson?
Thank you, Mayor Carlet. Just three brief items from John Sefton, our Community Services Director, and one brief item from Bill Mattingly, our Public Works and Utilities Director. John?
Good evening. Thank you, Carl. Good evening, mayor and council. It's certainly my pleasure to be before you to send a few commercials your way on some of the great happenings in the city of Peoria. First, it was just a few weeks ago that you, as a body, collectively supported an event called the Chinese Lantern Festival, the Arizona Chinese Lantern Festival, and it happened, and it happened big. We're very excited to report that not only was this festival a celebration and cultural exchange, sharing the culture of the East through art, entertainment, food, and education, in addition to the beautifully illuminated, richly colored silk Chinese lanterns, the festival featured 90, 90 specialized performers, 60 cultural demonstrators, 20 vendor booths, 150 event volunteers helped to make this happen, and the total spectator attendance of over 18,000 people. And we were very fortunate to have the video cameras rolling out there throughout the event in the two weeks that they were there, and I've got a quick clip here. Special thanks to Beau and Eric and the team at Channel 11.
According to the Chinese calendar, it's the Year of the Sheep. To honor the New Year, the city of Peoria partnered with a universal cultural organization, bringing the Chinese Lantern Festival to the Rio Vista Rec Center. Seventeen elaborate lanterns illuminate the night sky as crowds stroll the grounds admiring the magnificent artistry.
It's really, I think, treasure of the arts of making wire and silk and cloth and bring something alive with color and animation. So it's really a wonderful thing for kids, for adults, even for seniors to come and see.
No matter your age or interest, there really was something for everyone. Each night, the festival offered a variety of world-class entertainment. Everything from the mysterious art of Chinese mask changing. Lion dance and Kung-Fu, Tai Chi, dance, martial arts, and so much more. The Kids Zone kept the little ones busy, while those looking for good fortune tied their hopes for the New Year to the wishing tree. The Asian market offered cultural food, gifts, lanterns and clothing. The demonstration booth was a popular place to watch Chinese cooking, calligraphy and handcrafted art. The festival also focused on health and well-being.
We want to present to, no matter young, old or in between, just the way you look and how you can be better, take care of yourself.
The Chinese Lantern Festival is truly a festival for your senses and Peoria's newest cultural event, representing our diversity and openness.
In the city of Peoria, we are unique within ourselves. We have our own character, we have our own personality. We're not trying to be some other city. We're trying to be more of who we are, and this kind of unique event brings that characteristic out in our city.
Well, it was certainly a couple of weeks of a lot of fun and a lot of exposure for the city. It really lit up Rio Vista Park, was quite the spectacle from the 101 and all the way around. So I want to send a special thank you to, of course, our friends at the Police Department, the Fire Department. Without them, we would not have had the success in this event. And as well as the team at our building inspections, they spent countless hours out making sure that all of the intricacies of the electrical wiring and the lighting, all of that was really, really important. So we had a great city team that provided some good support. Now, from the Universal Cultural Organization, Gary Ong and Kathy Hummer here, and I know Gary wanted to address the council real quick.
Mayor and member of council, city of Peoria, and people of Peoria, want to thank you for allowing us to be part of your life for the last month here at the Rio Vista Park. It was exciting for us because we bring something really exciting, in my estimation, because it's the cultural part, as well as the health and wellness program that we presented. So far, we have a lot of good comments. We've got a lot of photos that was shared on Facebooks, and we like grow this every year, and I think this could be our future home for the festival. And again, thank you for your support and hope you come out and see us next year. Okay? Any questions I can answer?
No questions?
No?
No questions, but thank you very much. It was such a unique and inspiring festival. It was something so different for us, and I did love how you could see it right from the freeway. A lot of people stop and think about Peoria.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
All right, so the fun doesn't stop in the spring in Peoria, that's for sure. I want to, in just a couple of weeks, we will have our 39th Annual Dolly Sanchez Memorial Easter Egg Hunt on Saturday, April 4th, that's 2015, from 8:00 AM till noon. The Easter Egg Hunts were actually initiated in 1976 when the population was...
Susan?
So in 1976, they started this very, very family-friendly event with a lot of, you know, folks coming together. Cotton Tail Lane, the Bunnyland will all be open for people to enjoy. That'll be on Saturday, April 4th, 8:00 AM to noon at the Peoria Sports Complex. And we certainly want to encourage everybody to connect with us at peoriaaz.gov, as well as Facebook and Twitter for all the specific timelines. We start with them young, one and under, and one of the most unique things that I think is really, really important is that at 11 o'clock, we are creating an Easter Egg Hunt for persons with disabilities. As part of our adaptive programming, this was very special, we did this last year, and section off allowed them access to have fun and experience the Easter Egg Hunt just for their specialness in themselves. So that, again, that'll be Saturday, April 4th. We do ask that everybody bring a donation to St. Mary's Westside Food Bank Alliance, and obviously, that's a great organization that helps people in need. And ready for this weekend? We've got the P-83 Party to be held Saturday, March 21st. The P-83 Party is now in its sixth year. We're very excited to have American Idol winner and The Voice participant as well, Ray Lynn, has a number-one hit and country charts, "God Made Girls." And Casey James has a top-15 country chart topper, "Crying on a Suitcase." He's gained national attention with his second album that's just about to be released. Event prices are $10 for general admission, $30 for VIP. Check us out at p83az.com. And everybody that has been to a Peoria Spring Training already has a ticket to this event. Grab your ticket stub and come down to the P-83 Party. That's this Saturday, March 21st. We actually closed down 83rd Avenue, right in front of Mariners Way, right in front of the stadium. It will turn it into a full-on block party with a lot of fun, and I know we will have a few of you there welcoming the people. One of the new events this year is a youth band competition, starting just after 3:00. We've got groups from 18 to about 22, six different bands from high schools or high school-age kids going to come out and pretty much tear up the stage and show us how it's done and have some fun. We're actually going to give them a recording. The winner of this competition will have an opportunity as, to receive recording studio time. So we've got some really good participation coming there. Now, with all of that, one of the most awesome things about the city of Peoria is that all of our departments know how to have a good time. And I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Mattingly on the next item. Thank you.
Even Public Works and Utilities knows how to get it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks, John, for keying that up. This is also on Saturday, the 21st of March, and this is an event that we've hosted here in Peoria for the last five years, and it's called One for Water, Four Miler, Family Race and Fun Festival. So what this is, it's recognizing water conservation. It's celebrated by chasing a leaking toilet. So you can participate by running, and it's a sanctioned running event. You can walk, you can walk with your dog, which I plan to do myself this Saturday. You can also just come and enjoy the festivities. There's food, music, prizes, bounce house, and that's going to run from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And the registration for the race starts at 7:00 AM. You can do some advanced registration if you choose. Information and questions, there is a website, www.fixaleakweekaz.com. So a few pictures from last year, this was our team. Peoria took the prize for having the greatest participation, and we're competing against other Valley Cities and other water agencies, a few familiar faces in there. You can come and see our mascot. Misty is our water conservation mascot. And you can, again, chase the leaking toilet. You both, both, there's actually a mascot race, so the mascots themselves will participate in the race too. So please come out and celebrate that event. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. That looks hard to miss.
I can't top that, Mayor Carlet, that's all.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to reports from City Council, and we're going to start with Youth Council Liaison, Halt.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I would like to be the first to congratulate and welcome Mrs. Pinsbacher to the Peoria City Council. Last week, I attended the National League of, National League of Cities Conference in Washington, DC with Councilman Leoni and four other members of the Youth Advisory Board. A special thank you to Kevin Notton and Kelly Kincaid for taking us on this amazing trip. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I got to hear President Obama speak and shake his hand. That's probably the best part of the trip. That is all I have.
Thank you, and congratulations on such a great trip. Councilmember Leoni?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First thing I'd like to say, I want to congratulate Bridget to our City Council. I hope she knows in about a year and a half, she's going to do the same thing all over again. But it was a great, it was a great run for her and the two other candidates, and they all worked, they worked hard to win the election, and Bridget came out on top, so I want to congratulate her. The other thing is that when I was in Washington, DC, we went down to see Obama speak, and yes, this young man made history. He shook the hands of Obama, and I told him to put that hand in plastic and put his name on it. So I don't even know if you washed your hand. Did you wash your hand? But anyway, it was a, it was a great event for the kids to see, and they also met with McCain and Flake, that name Flake. So when they go to these meetings, they have the same meetings that we do, only it's with the youths of all the different states. And when it first started, I think there's about 200 kids from different states, now they get over 1,000. So everybody's getting involved in it, and it's great for these young kids to go to DC and to meet with their politicians. The other thing I want to mention, on March the 4th, we had a charity game at the Sports Complex, retired ballplayers signing autographs. It was a beautiful day for the game, and every charity game that they have there just works out real great, and the money goes for the kids. Also, on the 14th, I went to Varney Park, and I let Vicki talk about that, but it was a great event, and like I say, all those events are important to the city, and that turned out just great for the kids. The other thing I did, I went to the, don't mind my voice, I went to the School Board District meeting. The both rooms were packed full of people, and you had both sides speaking about four-day school for the kids. So there was no decision made, but a lot of people had a lot of things to say, because I get my own views on that. The other thing I want to mention, that March the 28th, from 6:00 to 9:00 at Scotland Yard Park, we also have an event coming up there, and it's on 9251 West Scotland Avenue, Peoria, from 6:00 to 9:00. It's a free event, had dogs, chips, soda, water, cookies, popcorns and bouncing house, and we're going to have a movie, and it's called Disney Big Hero 6. So if you have a chance, come on down with the kids. It's going to be exciting. Thank each and every one of you, and God bless America.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Well, again, I'd be remiss not to welcome Bridget. You're joining a really great group here, and we all love Peoria and work hard, and I know from your campaign, you're going to work equally hard and really be an asset to this team. So I'm sorry he had to mention the year and a half thing, because I'm sure you didn't know that already. And Susan, where'd she go? She's gone, but I wanted to thank her for that really good report. I actually understood the money part on the census thing. My biggest happiness is last week, except for the fact that my husband had a big birthday and had a lot of family here, that's personal happiness. But in terms of the city, we had Park Fest in Varney Park, and it was just as amazing as all of the Park Fests. This was an idea that was brought on while I was not still on council, and I just think it's amazing. We had over 600, we're counted, they stopped counting at 600. I think that's a record, isn't it, John?
Right in there.
Right, right in there. We're going to claim that it's the record, okay, unless somebody can prove us otherwise. And we did a little bit different this time, in addition to the carnival, carnival atmosphere and the food, free hot dogs, live band, Theater Works Stardust Group performed, and they're always amazing. The Leadership West class brought in a lot of community partners this time to really serve the neighborhood, and over 100 kids had their eyes tested free. Food vouchers were given out for $55 each, over 100, 200 food vouchers were given out to be redeemed at Westside Food Bank. Clothing, if you can imagine a basketball, this was, this took place at the Boys and Girls Club, so if you can imagine a full-size basketball court with table after table after table, it looked like the largest clothing sale in the world, and they were all free. They were clean, pressed, sized, and lots and lots of volunteers in there to help kids and adults find clothes. They had business suits, they just had amazing clothing in there. Thanks to the Boys and Girls Club, Karina Rousseau, who's on our staff, and I think she's probably home because she's tired, really led up the Leadership West class on that. Thanks to the police, who had a bike rodeo and gave away bike helmets, seven bikes were, and thank you, John, for contributing two of those to the cause, and I contributed five to kids. If they were in the bike raffle, they got a ticket, and then they were in a drawing. So it was the Lions, the Lions Club who sponsored the site testing, and I think I've covered everything. I'm sure I probably missed somebody, because I always do when I try to say thank you specifically. And Susan, you missed me saying thank you for your nice presentation. And we do have a Habitat for Humanity, it's the last house being built in Peoria right now, and it's this coming Saturday. And I know Bill and I will for sure be there, and maybe Kathy, and welcoming these new neighbors into the Acacia District. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Finn?
Just a few brief comments. Bridget, welcome aboard. I think you're going to do a great job, so I'm sure you're glad it's over. But welcome aboard and congratulations. Reminder to Pallaverty District that big trash pickup is still going on, so be sure you check your calendars and see what, see what the date is for your pickup. And then finally, I would be remiss in not mentioning, as I watched the news and saw all of the things that were going on with public safety across the nation. I think it's horrible what's happening, and our officers are coming under fire, so I just wanted to personally thank our Police Department for going out every day in lieu of everything that's going on across this country. I think it's tragic, and I thank you every day for the, when you go out there and you protect everybody in this city. So thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Youth Council Liaison Mullane?
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, congratulations to now Councilman Ms. Binsbacher. Currently, myself, I'm on spring break. I attended actually the meeting at the Peoria High School District, the board meeting about that four-day school week. It's a very, very big topic. I've been very, very much involved with our city, with our, of course, our district and different officials across the city of Peoria and whoever represents our district, because it is a big issue as far as our students are concerned. I'm very involved with that and just enjoying my spring break and just counting down the days until graduation, so thank you so much.
It does. Councilmember Binsbacher?
I would just like to say just how wonderful it is to be here, and thank you all again for your support and making me feel so welcome. So I look forward to a bright future, growing Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Patana?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple Saturdays ago, I attended the West Valley Arts Council Awards. I think there were only four awards given out, and I'm very pleased to announce that TheaterWorks was one of the recipients of those awards. They got the Champion of the Arts Award. TheaterWorks has been serving the West Valley for over 29 years, and obviously, they have worked with tens of thousands of youth. Special thanks to Dan Shea, who has worked very hard and diligently in trying to turn that company around. This is our city theater, and I think we're all very proud that they, that they received this award. I also attended Councilmember Hunt's Park Fest. It was interesting. It was different and unique. As she mentioned, they were giving haircuts, they had eye exams, hearing exams, and the clothing giveaway was pretty remarkable. We happened to be, Vice Mayor Edwards and myself were in the gymnasium, and it's just like she said, it was just full of clothing, and it was nice to see people, you know, taking bags full of clothing out of there that they could use, and it was a very unique Park Fest. All Park Fests are unique to the district, so if you ever, if you have one in your district, please plan on attending. They're, they're very well-done. And thanks to the staff, all the staff that worked so very hard to make that, that event successful. I also attended the, several weeks ago, the Arizona Chinese Lantern Festival. The displays were great, the food was amazing, entertainment was great. It was a unique experience for Peoria, and I hope that we see them again next year. If you haven't had a chance to attend the Dolly Sanchez Easter Egg Hunt, please make an effort to do that. It is so much fun to see those little kids chasing after candy. Some know what they're doing, some don't know what they're doing, but it's really fun to watch, particularly the small children. Let's see. Congratulations to Bridget Binsbacher. Welcome. I know it was a hard-fought race. You're up here now, you deserve to be here, so congratulations. We look forward to working with you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Bridget, welcome. Ben said enough, but you had a well-deserved win, and just welcome and look forward to working with you. So I had a lot of activities to attend over the last month, starting off with the Peoria Diamond Club Charity Game. What a turnout. Just watching the fans come into the new park and listening to the comments that everybody had was phenomenal. You guys, staff, you guys hit it out of the park. Everybody seemed very pleased with the work that has been done, was very excited about the work that's going to be done by the look of the, you know, the signage that you had up there for things to come. So the buzz is there, people are very excited, so just keep up the work. On the 12th, I was over in Glendale on hand for the topping-off celebration over at the West Valley Resort, the new casino, and actually got to sign my name on the last steel girder that was being put up, along with other council members from, Councilman Leonie and members of Glendale and other cities. And so we got to sign our name before that piece of steel was raised and put in place. So it'll be opening, from what we understand, the fourth quarter of this year, so it's a very exciting and new addition to the West Valley. I know that Peoria will prosper for that casino being in place as well. That afternoon, or that evening, I attended the Padres and Dodgers game, where I got the unique opportunity to welcome comedian Will Ferrell, actor Will Ferrell, and welcome him to Peoria on behalf of you, Mayor and Council. And I think I got a couple of good pictures with him, but he was here filming an HBO special, and his goal for the day was to go to all, I believe it's nine or 10 ballfields and play different positions. And he played outfield and pitcher at our, at our facility, and so it was just great to see him. The crowds just loved him being there, and he was joking and playing with everybody, so that was great to attend. I attended Councilman Hunt's Park Fest, and phenomenal turnout. What you didn't mention is, did you give Mr. Swenson his happy-faced tie?
I have a tie outside.[1208.33][1208.33](laughter)
So he has it, so you're gonna see a nice, I hope I didn't, I hope I didn't ruin the surprise, but she has a nice happy-faced tie for you.[1215.83][1215.83](laughter) So. This morning, I was able to host a Willow District meeting over at the new Joey and Gina's Restaurant right across from Hark and Cedar, and we had a fairly good turnout. I want to thank staff for coming and answering questions that the city residents had of the new P-83 development and street improvements, and just asking questions and answering questions of any of the residents, it was very much appreciated from the, from the residents, and I want to thank you guys for putting that on. Kind of a serious note, I want to remind everybody in the Willow District that tomorrow evening is your opportunity to come out and speak out against billboards. Becker Boards, as everybody knows, attempting to put billboards off the freeway, Bell Road and 101 Freeway. It's going to be right on the backyards of residents within Peoria and specifically the Willow District. I implore you to come out and voice your concerns. Without your concerns, these things could happen, and I'm working, along with the rest of the council, as hard as we can to not have these things in your backyard, but we need your support. You have to come out and show your presence. If, if you don't do it, there's an opportunity that they're gonna be put in place, and once they're in, your property values will go down. Nobody wants to buy a house with a 95, or an 85-foot, two billboards, electronic billboards in your backyard. So please come out and, and show your opposition. And then lastly, as John mentioned, P-83 is on this coming Saturday. I look forward to meeting and talking to residents. We've got a great lineup of performers and some, just some great venues going on, so please come out and enjoy the festivities. Peoria knows how to put on a party. Just look around, look at all the parties, look at all the Park Fests that we do. We, Peoria doesn't write, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I again want to congratulate Bridget as our new council member, and I also want to congratulate and thank the citizens of Peoria. I'm sure you're very happy that the signs are finally down. They were up for a very long time. It was an incredibly long and very unique election that we had in the city of Peoria, because the county left the name of one of the candidates off of the ballot, twice. They did that twice. And so one of the elections had to be thrown out, and, and the candidates had to start over. So I just have to say that the perseverance that you showed really speaks volumes of your character, and for the citizens of Peoria and the Mesquite District in particular, you now have a full council focused on your needs, focused on the citizens of Peoria and what you need and what we can do to be a better city. So congratulations to you, and congratulations to all of us for having a great council to work with. And with that, we are adjourned, and we will now reconvene for the Vestancia West Community Facilities District Board Meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Chairperson Carlet?
Here.
Vice Chair Edwards?
Here.
Board Member Binsbacher?
Here.
Board Member Patana?
Here.
Board Member Finn?
Still here.
Board Member Hunt?
All here.
Board Member Leonie?
Here.
Board Liaison Mullane?
Here.
And Board Liaison Halt?
Here.
Thank you. This is the final call to submit speaker request forms. If anyone would like to address an issue that is on the agenda, or if you would like to speak regarding a non-agenda item, we have speaker request forms available in the lobby or from the city clerk. The consent agenda consists of one item, that would be the minutes from the December 9th special meeting. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion from Board Member Hunt and a second from Vice Chair Board Member Edwards. Please vote, and the clerk will record your vote.[1485.96][1485.96](applause) Thank you. It is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is 20R, Sale and Issuance of General Obligation Bonds of the District. Staff report?
Yes, Brent Mattingly, of course, is the Chief Financial Officer for the district as well as for the city. Brent?
Thank you, Carl. The item before you this evening is a resolution taking action with regard to the sale of a small amount of Community Facilities District General Obligation Bonds of the Vestancia West Community Facilities District. And the resolution really accomplishes primarily four items. It authorizes the sale and issuance of up to $60,000 of general obligation bonds of the district. It approves a placement arranged agreement for the sale of those bonds. It delegates all actions necessary for the bond sale to the district treasurer, which is myself, and it authorizes levying of an ad valorem property tax to pay the principal and interest on those bonds. In way of background, since there are some relatively new members of this board, in December of 2013, the city council approved an ordinance which rezoned approximately 360 acres of vacant land that would allow approximately 1,000 single-family dwelling units that is known to everyone as the Trilogy West Development that's currently underway. One of the zoning stipulations of that ordinance was designed to create a new Community Facilities District that encompassed the Trilogy West project. It was intended to create a similar tax rate between, a similar CFD tax rate between the existing Trilogy Development that's part of Vestancia and the new Trilogy West Development. In August of 2014, the city council formed that new Community Facilities District at the request of the developer. In October of 2014, the new Community Facilities District had its first meeting. At that meeting, you organized the district, you approved a district development and financing agreement, and you called for a bond election and property tax election to occur. That election actually took place on December 14th of 20, I'm sorry, on December 2nd of 2014, and then, as you just saw in your minutes, at your last meeting on December 9th, the district board adopted a resolution declaring the results of that bond and property tax election. So the purpose of this bond sale transaction before you this evening is largely to establish that property tax rate within the new district of approximately $2.10 per $100 of assessed value. That is the estimated tax rate that would provide for the payment of this initial small amount of bonds. By way of looking a little bit into the future, the approved development agreement anticipates a future bond sale in the amount of approximately $6 million or so for the acquisition or construction of infrastructure directly related to the Trilogy West Development Project. And that, when that second bond sale occurs, we would be bringing back to you as a board all of the required legal documents and other documentation that would be necessary for that bond transaction to actually happen. So the item before you this evening, again, and our staff recommendation for you this evening, is the adoption of the resolution taking actions to authorize the initial bond sale in the approximate amount of $60,000, approving the related legal documents, authorizing the district treasurer to conduct the bond sale, and authorizing the levying of a property tax to repay the bonds.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Mattingly? All right. Seeing none, is there a motion on 20R?
So.
Okay, motion by Board Member Patana?
Second.
Second by Board Member Finn. Please vote. It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is call to the public for non-agenda items. I do not have any forms, so there being no further business, we are adjourned.